I'm calling the North Reading School Committee to order for December 9th. First order of business is public input. Anybody here to address any issues tonight? Seeing nobody, next we'll move to our student report and tonight we have Senior Matthew Lathan.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. This past Friday, the Second Annual Winter Ball for freshmen and sophomores was held. It was sponsored by, it was sponsored and hosted by the junior class and well over 200 students attended. Everyone who went had a great time, no complaints. On Tuesday, November 26th, the annual powder puff game between the senior and junior girls was held on the turf field under lights. The seniors dominated the game, defeated the juniors 30 to nothing. And I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Littlepre, who did an awesome job efficiently in the game.
It's a team though.
The 55th Annual Thanksgiving Game against the field was held in the turf field. The Hornets ended their season with a remarkable win, 42 to 35 versus the Pioneers. During the game, senior CJ McCarthy broke the school record for most rushing yards, 1,926 to be exact. The previous record was held by Carl Pani with 1,776 yards. So, congrats CJ. Yesterday, the football banquet was held at the Hillview Country Club. Everyone had a great time, food was delicious. There were several distinct awards given out to players. MVPs for this year were seniors CJ McCarthy and Ryan Sanborn. The coaches award was given to sophomore Nick O'Connell. And the unsung hero award was given to junior Cole Fues. So, congrats to those players. Last Monday night, the winter sports started in our full swing this week. This past weekend, the boys basketball team had a scrimmage versus Danvers. Also, the wrestling team had a scrimmage as well. This upcoming Friday, the basketball team, both teams, boys and girls, will have their first games of the season. The boys team will be traveling to New Yorkport and the girls will have their first home game of the season. Both games begin at 7 o'clock. On Saturday, the boys hockey team will have their first game versus Masco at the Burbank Arena in Reading and the game will begin promptly at 7:50. Also on Saturday, the wrestling team will be hosting a quad match here in the gym. This past Friday, there was an engineering field trip to Northeastern University in Boston. Masco has announced today their performance stage for their winter musical Xanadu. The opening night will be on Friday, January 31st and the second show of that weekend will be on Saturday, February 1st. There will also be two other showings the week after, Friday the 7th and Saturday the 8th. Today, senior Jeremy Colberg Sucey was presented the Academic Award of Excellence by Mrs. Willis. The award was giving for, was given to students from the Massachusetts Association of Schools of School Superintendents, excuse me, and is given to students who are in the top 5% of their class and show high academic performance and school involvement. So, congrats Jeremy. For my work tonight, I brought in a lab that was recently done in my honors physics class. The purpose of this lab was to use the skills we were recently taught about pre-fall acceleration. We had to compile data and graph the data to match the acceleration of a falling weight. We had to compare that to displacement of time, velocity, and acceleration. One thing that I really enjoyed about this lab is we had to complete it on Excel and showing that the number of teachers who are integrating technology into the classroom is growing, I've seen this year, especially when next year we'll have the new building with the greater opportunity to technology in the classroom. So, I'm very happy to do more of these in the future. I might as well pass this on.
Any questions? I like when you bring physics stuff in because Jerry can check it to see if it's right. That was his specialty in high school. It was interesting, I just, I passed an article actually along today to Dr. Daly and to Superintendent Willis, which I think was a Time Magazine article, I'm not sure. It was an article talking about can iPads help students in science and they, it was actually Harvard, it was from Harvard, Harvard did a study and they concluded that unquestionably iPads can play a significant role in students' understanding of science. They, they gave an example of when a teacher is teaching, sometimes they'll show the earth and the moon, and the moon, and they'll have it like the moon arms length away. So, the kid kinda, but if you were really showing it the right perspective, it would be 30, the moon would be 30 feet away. And you can show that on an iPad, whereas in a classroom, it's a little bit harder to show that. And they said that kids automatically have a better understanding for things like the solar system and, you know, where the planets are and how far apart they are, just by having them the right, the right distance. So, I think the way we're integrating technology into our curriculum is working extremely well. Any questions or comments for Matthew? Do you want to say that was the best high, that was the best Thanksgiving game I've ever seen?
Yeah, and not, you know, I hate to give out praise for an individual on a team sport, especially a team, a sport like football, but CJ McCarthy, in addition to setting the Yadaj record, he also was leading scorer in all of Massachusetts up until the Super Bowl games on Saturday.
200 points.
He had 200 points for the season, which is incredible. But the team had a great season, very disciplined, very well coached, it was, it was great to watch. The last three seasons have been tremendous.
He scored 8 touchdowns his last four games.
Yeah.
Which is, which is incredible. And Superintendent Willis, I understand you have something else you'd like to add to the student report?
I'd like to mention another very special award that recently was given to our student representative this evening, Matthew Lathan. Earlier this fall, but not too long ago, Matthew was applying for the 52nd Annual United States Senate Youth Scholarship Program. There was 165 students in the Commonwealth that registered to take the qualifying exam. Two students were selected as delegates and two students were selected as alternates. Matthew Lathan from North Reading High School is the first alternate for this very important honor. So, I'd like Matthew to talk a little bit about what he needed to do to prepare and what this was all about.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. I would can say it was an excellent experience. I'm a bit disappointed that I was an alternate, but just seeing, you know, how it came to this, it's just amazing to me. I never thought I'd become in this position and the challenge, the challenge to get there was enormous. First, starting out, I remember going to the guidance office back in September and seeing this application for US senate form. That, you know, it's really interesting, spending a week in Washington, you know, meeting the senators, meeting the president, Supreme Court justices, getting exclusive tours of all Washington to see, I was like, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. So, to apply, had to be in certain student government positions. I put down student representative tonight, me asking, I'm involved, a bunch of others as well. Then you had to take a test. 165 students across the state took the test. Top 10 scores in the state were selected for all day, interview, lunch in, and you had to complete an essay on the spot at the Mass Department of Education, Secretary of Elementary in Alton. So, that day I went in, it was interviewed by panelists, you know, asking the questions of what I'm involved in the school, you know, what do I hope to do in the future, et cetera. And you had to write an essay on the spot, like I mentioned before. The essay topic I chose was, why was it so hard for Congress to pass, so I've gotten control of legislation up to Sandy Hook. And I thought, you know, pretty tough, you know, considering, you know, being a student in school, worrying about security issues on a daily basis, you know, something I could relate to easily. You know, after that process, they were chosen down to the two finalists and the two alternates. So, again, I'm glad I had the opportunity and it is an experience I will not forget.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Hope this doesn't hurt Matt, but I think I did find an hour right here. One of us calculated.
Did you, oh really? Yeah. Listen, it was okay though, I trust Jerry. Thanks, Matt.
I just want to also thank Mrs. Bernard, Mrs. Littlepre, and Mrs. Willis for the support in this whole process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are at the high school tonight as we're on our, probably I think our sixth whirlwind, sixth annual whirlwind tour of the North Reading schools. This will be our last meeting in this quaint pseudo almost real building cafeteria we're missing. But tonight we have Mr. John Minart and a cast of thousands from the high school. So, John, if you want to take it away. For show.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. I want to thank you all for, for giving us the opportunity tonight to, to host you and to provide you with some, some information about what I consider to be some, some very important things going on at the high school. As you know from the past, what I've tried to do is invite various teachers, sometimes students, to come in and to present to you about some of the work that they're doing. And I'm very pleased and thankful to four folks that are here tonight to make a total of three presentations to you. So, I'm going to begin with Mr. Nosie. Mr. Evan Nosie is one of our humanities teachers and Evan teaches what is a relatively new elective course for juniors and seniors, the Contemporary Affairs Class, which if you recall, and I'm going to tonight, after the presentations, ask you to, to entertain the idea of adoption of some new courses for the 2014-15 school year. But each year, when I come to you and make presentations for some of the courses that we would like to offer to students here at the high school, and you always respond very favorably to that request, and I appreciate that. I think tonight is an opportunity for you to, to hear from one of the teachers about a course that has really blossomed into, into a very popular elective with our upper classroom. We're running two sections of Contemporary Affairs. Evan is teaching both of them and each class has 30 students in it, so we have 60 students in two classes. I think it speaks very well of the content of the course and I think it also speaks very favorably as a teacher because Evan has, has taught the course from its first year and has really done a nice job in promoting it among the students. So, he has a brief presentation for you to just kind of walk you through maybe, for lack of a better way to say it, maybe a day in the life of the Contemporary Affairs Class. So, Evan, if you want to take over.
Can I say here right now?
That's fine. Sure. Can you hear, can you pick him up?
Okay. I present, I proposed this course two years ago. It was, when I was in high school, it was one of my favorite courses, it was actually the, the course that made me want to be a teacher. So, being a teacher is really rewarding and a lot of fun, too. This is, not the button. That's the button. This is the course description of what we do in class. Basically, we talk about the news, that's kind of the, the goal every day. It makes planning interesting for me because I, I teach that day and things happen often during class. So, I, I sort of developed a way to plan for the course that makes that possible and I'll get to that in a minute. We do a lot when we get into the news, not just, you know, this happened in this country, this happened in this city. We do a lot of the background, geography, things like that. To really get a good context of what's happening in the area and sort of why it's happening, has it happened before, things like that. Structurally, we don't have a textbook. We use the internet a lot. We have like a class Twitter, we follow different newsmakers and news sources, things like that. And students have to get comfortable with research and they do, which is great because it's a good skill for other classes. Structurally, I, I tend to have the whole, the whole week has one sort of overarching theme that's more general. This is stuff kids often ask me about. So, they're always interested in North Korea. Like, can we talk about North Korea? So, I'll pick a week and that's, can we talk about North Korea this week? And we'll find something going on and we'll do something with it. Other thematic units we've done, we've done one with the NSA and the spying allegations. This week we're doing the nuclear deal with Iran. We did one a few weeks ago with the deficit. So, we pick sort of broader topics that can apply to every day. And we also have our regular features, the written journals, check our Twitter. We have a fantasy world competition, which I'll get to in a second, and we check out photos around there, which is sort of, sort of make it interesting and bring it together. So, this is one of the, the larger thematic units we did a couple of weeks ago, all about the deficit. So, we solved the deficit. It was the 2030 deficit, which is the, the latest year they had projections for spending. So, what they did is they, they had this chart, they'll look at this, they had these charts and on the left is places they could cut spending, on the right is places they could raise revenue. So, they had to basically make their decisions, what are they going to cut? So, this big one is like, I think it was cutting Medicare, which is nothing to care about. Different military, different military things, different taxes and stuff. And it was really fun because they had to, they had to get comfortable with a lot of different things and then defend their decisions to the class, which is something we do a lot. We did something very, some of this very early in the year with Syria. So, what you do in Syria and can you defend your, your position? This is one of our thematic units we did a couple of weeks ago. And this is our fantasy world competition. We do this every day and this is sort of to keep them watching the news, listening to the news. On the first or second day of school, we have a draft and they pick a country and their job is to follow this country throughout the year. And when certain things happen in their country, they bring in proof and they get points. We have a stand, like a chart in the back of the room, we have standings. And this is just like, you know, five minutes into class sort of thing. So, they get points for all these different things. Some of them are kind of goofy, like Prince William going to the country. But it makes them, I mean, I have kids that bring stuff every day about their country and they become sort of experts on places they probably would never, would have really paid attention to, which is nice.
Does anyone have the Ukraine and Thailand, they're picking up a lot of points this week?
Nobody has Ukraine and Thailand.
Too bad.
Our winners for first quarter, we had Russia won and Somalia. Those are our winners. So, I don't know who's going with this quarter. But this is sort of like the, the typical week. This is a couple of weeks ago what we did. Our thematic unit was all about foreign aid, so understanding foreign aid system, understanding how these things work. So, our big goal was researching the goals of the USAID, so the US Agency for International Development. They learned how to write letters to Congress. They researched specific problems, they, they base it on their fantasy world country. And then at the end of the week, we wrote letters to Ed Markey, who's the, who's on the Subcommittee for International Aid, on the Foreign Relations in the Senate. So, this is actually, this is a green week, so it was, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So, this is what we did in those three classes, the Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So, we started out with, you know, checking Twitter, checking out the world, updated fantasy world. We started our research, but I tend to build in 10, five, five or 10 minutes into class for the breaking news. So, what happened was that was the day of the tragedy at Damaris High School. So, we actually watched the District Attorney's press conference live. We had, I sort of built it and we can watch news happen, we can sift through the source and do stuff with it. And then, and we did a lot of things, things happened, so we're able to fill up some time there. And then what I do in class is, I'm lucky, I have a, I have a first block prep both days, so I'm able to sort of plan this, what happened the day before that day. So, our journal entry was about Damaris High. Back to our regular features, then we started working on how to write to Congress and how to research. And we finished out by writing our letters to Senator Markey and we're still waiting for our response. I sent him the big packet of 60 letters.
Good luck.
And the same thing on the, on that Friday, too, we had a chance to watch, just for a few minutes, just jumped in, that was the weekend when the Obamacare website started having their, their issues. So, we were able to watch a lot of those hearings, sort of get fluence and all of that. And that is Contemporary Affairs. It's very fun to teach and I like it a lot.
Questions or comments?
Why do you think it's so popular?
I like to think it's me.
Of course, other than that. Do you have a backup resource?
I think the kids just get interested in, in learning about stuff they don't normally learn about and it's a way for them to, they definitely dictate what we do in class and I think that makes it appealing to them. Because they want to learn about North Korea, we can learn about North Korea and that's, they have that flexibility, yeah.
If I was running the world, this would be a required course for every student, every high school in this country. Because there are some kids who on their own will follow this stuff, but there are a lot of other kids, unless they're prodded, that they're not going to be interested in it. And I think this is, it's like the old civics course that the old guys like me used to have when we were in high school.
Yeah, I took it. I'm a model.
Well, you're not a guy.
But, but this is a great course.
I think, I think I'd go one step beyond every kid, every adult.
Every adult, exactly. If we had adult education, this would be, you could just give this one course and it would be filled every.
As far as the, reducing the deficit as a revenue enhancer, tell them they can double the interest rate on their student loans.
You got it right.
I have another question.
Karen?
How do you use Twitter in the classroom?
We, I usually have it up during class and I'll refresh it. We have like our own, like NRHSCA and we just sort of follow stuff. I occasionally use to tweet out like assignments and reminders, but I, I'm not always good about doing that and they have a website for that. But they, basically it's up there and that's sort of where we get our news.
So, you're like following AP or Reuters or Wall Street Journal?
Yeah, all those.
Or follow House shooters.
Yeah, and we see what's trending and we, we do that. We did a lot with the Damaris High School using Twitter that day.
I watched a, a little YouTube the other day of a man on the street with a microphone and he was actually collecting signatures for Karl Marx to run as President of the United States. And he.
How old is he now?
He got, he got about eight in a row from just people walking.
They signed.
They signed up for Karl Marx to run as President of the United States.
They didn't even ask any questions?
First off, he doesn't exist anymore. And secondly.
I'm going to guess there's a Karl Marx someplace in the world today.
Well, the same thing they did, they went out on the, on the street and said, do you prefer the Affordable Care Act or Obamacare? And everybody said the Affordable Care Act and they gave their reasons why it was good and my Obamacare was bad. It's the same kind of, I have to.
Totally disconnected.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a, a couple of points, thank you very much, Aaron, that was great.
Thank you.
I think it's probably, you know, important for you folks to know, I think we probably could offer the course to more than the 60 students who take it. We're, we're up against some, some issues with staffing that we, we have to run some of our core courses and, but Evan, you know, it's, it's not something that we desire to do, to run classes with 30 students in them, but the teachers that teach these electives do so because they want to and it's kind of like, you know, just give the students to us and we'll, we'll make it work. And I think that's, that's a testament to him. It's a very popular course, very, just from that brief snippet, you can see how it would be so interesting to a, to a junior or senior in high school, so. The second presentation we have tonight is from our library media specialist, Ms. Kim Smith. And Kim has, has been doing an extensive amount of work to integrate her skills as a librarian and media specialist to, to classes that are offered at the high school. Very often, Kim is in the classroom, working with, with students, working with teachers. She's hosting her own kind of little mini module classes in the, in the library itself for people to come in and learn more about some of the services that, that they can avail themselves of. And I thought it was, seeing that Kim has done an extensive amount of work in a short amount of time that she's been working with us, I thought it might be helpful for all of you to, to get a little snippet into, into what exactly is going on with the Library and Media Center and especially as we think about moving into the new school with all of the greater capabilities we're going to have in the Library and Media Center. I can only see what, what very good work Kim has started, just really mushrooming in the new building. So, we're very excited about the work that Kim is doing. I thank her for being here and I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you. Good evening. So, the first thing I'm going to do is present to you the way I would present to students that are coming into a class and we're going to access the library's website to be able to get to some information. So, basically what I do is I tell them, as long as they have access to the internet, whether it be on their phone, on a computer, on an iPad, laptop, whatever, whatever technology they have in front of them, all they have to do is Google North Reading High School. When you Google North Reading High School, the top result that comes up is the link to the high school. Once you're there, you notice that on the side, you have a bunch of different links and the one that the kids are looking for is the one that says Media Center, which is right here. When you click on that, it brings you to the link on the high school's website, to the Media Center. So, this is not actually the library's website, but it is a link to get you to the library's website. And I also remind them when I show them this, that by doing this, they have access to my email address, if they have a question outside of school, you know, Ms. Smith, you, you presented something on a specific database, how do I get back to that, what was the password, or, you know, whatever questions they may have. And I am one of those people that checks my email outside of school. You know, I, a lot of people will say, you know, oh, when you leave school, you leave school and you leave your job, but I, I don't do that. So, but I also warn them that if they have a project and it's due the next day, don't email me at 2:00 in the morning and expect that I'm going to be up and checking my email and giving you an answer to that. So, they have access to that. They also have access if they want to look for a book inside school, the same link takes them outside of school to look in the catalog and then at the bottom, they have access to the library's website and you'll see there's also a QR code. So, all of the kids that are using iPads in classes, you know, have the opportunity at one point or another to use the iPad and scan QR codes for scavenger hunt or, you know, for different things. So, outside the library, there's actually a QR code that brings you right to the library's website. And, you know, some of the kids are good and they understand what that is, they'll use their smartphone and scan it. But some of them, you know, you say, tell them, well, you know, download an app that'll scan a QR code and they, you know, they're not sure what that is. So, that's part of the process, too. You know, kids pretty much all have cell phones in their pocket at all times, not necessarily always in their pocket. So, trying to get them to remember appropriate uses of technology is one of the things that I'm trying really hard to do, you know? We all have our phones, we all are trying to, you know, keep up with what's going on in the world, but, you know, there are times when it's appropriate, times when it's not. So, we talk a lot about that. All right, so, when they go to the library's website, this is the homepage for the website. So, for tonight, and I have 10 bullet points in less than 10 minutes, so you're going to see that I'm going to speed up my topic. So, where we're going to go right now for tonight is this 21st Century Library. So, you notice that there's a little poster there that says, please interrupt me. And if you've ever been into the high school library, hopefully you've noticed that at the circulation desk, there is that poster right below the desk. And I put that there for a really important reason. I think that students and staff tend to forget, when they see somebody sitting at a computer at a desk, they think that clearly that person must be too busy to, you know, have the time to work with you or that if you go up to the desk, you're bothering them. So, I had gone to a library conference where they were giving those out, so I said, oh my gosh, I have to have one of these and put it at the desk. That turned into an article in the high school newsletter and it also turned into a blog post for the Hood School. Len McKay, the principal at the Hood School, happened to be at the high school for something one day and he saw that at my desk and he's like, that is the coolest thing. Could you do me a favor? Could you just write me a little article on, you know, what that's all about, why you have it there, you know, why that's part of your philosophy? So, if you want to read more, just click, you know, go back to it later, click on the poster. But bottom line is, you know, most people think that the job of a school librarian is just connected to books and that's not necessarily true. That's the first thing that people think of, but in this day and age, that's not really what we're doing anymore. You know, the first role that people think of is promoting reading for information and for pleasure, you know, and that requires having an understanding of the interests and the abilities of the student population and also the teachers that are in the building and what they're teaching. So, that is a role. But, you know, they picture that that's what a librarian does all day, is checks book in, checks book, checks books out, you know, shelves things. No, very, very small part of the job. A lot of people are unaware of the active role that librarians now play in the educational process. In Massachusetts, in order to be a certified librarian, you have to have a degree and you have to have a license as an educator. So, you know, a lot of people don't realize that and they don't realize that part of that educational process is, you know, being aware of the curriculum frameworks for the gamut, K through 12, you know? And now that we have common core, that's also part of what is, you know, our responsibility of a librarian. So, another aspect of the job is being familiar with technology and that's something that happens a lot these days in the library. You know, kids will come in, there's Wi-Fi access in the library, so kids will come in and they'll be, you know, asking me, you know, Ms. Smith, you know, how, I'm trying to connect, you know, the, the iPad to the Wi-Fi so that I can email this project to my teacher. And, you know, they're on the wrong network and it's asking them for a password and they want, you know, well, what's the password? No, no, no. We, you know, we'll go to this other network and you don't even need a password and a lot of medical effects. So, I'm just, you know, helping them with things like that. I'm also helping teachers that come in and, you know, they have kids doing projects and the kids will email their projects and then they want a way to present the projects to the rest of the class and, you know, so I'll be there and I'll be helping them, you know, connect a projector, doing things like that. So, anyway, back to the, so the reason for the poster is to give people, not just the students, but also the, the faculty, the idea that, you know, just because I'm sitting at my computer typing, doesn't mean that I don't want to answer your question. And I think the kids are getting a lot better with that, you know? When I first started, their first response was, I'm sorry to bother you, but, you know? response was, I'm sorry to bother you, but, you know. And I repeatedly would say to them, no, no, you don't understand. I wouldn't have a job if you weren't here asking me questions. That is my job. I'm here to see you succeed. So I think they're getting that now. All right. So model classroom, we have Chromebooks, we have iPads. We have a lot of collaboration going on. One of the things that we're doing with the model classroom is having the kids use Chromebooks and then sharing their work with their peers using Google, you know, using Google Drive. And documents that they share, they're able to, you know, work on at the same time. You know, so-and-so could be here at school, and, you know, their partner could be homesick for the day. But as long as the partner has access to the internet, they can both be writing the same document, you know, together. And you can actually see when people are editing. It's pretty cool. So it's one example of the type of collaborative efforts that are going on. The library website, it's available to students 24/7. Not everything that we have in the library is available to them 24/7, but a lot of stuff. And it's getting better. You know, we have electronic resources that, we have the print books in the library, and then there are electronic resources that are the exact same thing as the print version, except that, you know, they're accessing it online, that they can get to at home. So when kids have projects, a lot of times, if we're pulling books, you know, I'll tell them, okay, so these are the things that you only have access to here in the building. These are the ones that you probably want to save because you have access to those at home. So, you know, don't look at those right now, look at these other ones. So talking about Common Core State Standards, I just put a little quote from the Common Core State Standards Initiative, basically what the things are involved in the Common Core State Standards. And I think it's important that we talk about the fact that 21st Century's skills require students to be able to gather, comprehend, evaluate, synthesize, and report on information and ideas. They need to be able to conduct original research, analyze and create print and non-print information to show, you know, this is what we've learned, and be able to, you know, translate that into a product. And it's embedded in all of the curriculum, including the library, you know. So anybody who has any more interest in talking about or learning about Common Core, I've got a couple of links here for you for later. So talking about other things that the library is doing, the library follows Pinterest. I don't know, anybody here a Pinterest follower? Most people think of Pinterest, and they think, oh, that's where you go when you're going to plan your wedding. That's where you put all your dresses and things like that. But Pinterest actually has a lot of stuff for educators, and a lot of people share what they find. You know, if you just go into the high school library's Common Core page on Pinterest, you'll see all of these links. And, you know, some I found, some I got from other people. But all of these, when you click on them, you know, you can actually get to websites that have more information. And people are really good about sharing. So there's a huge network, and it's not just within the school building. I mean, it's, you know, around the world. So, and that's something that I'm sharing with teachers. It's really cool, because you can actually take this board, and if I were logged in, you would actually see that you could take that whole board and email it to somebody. So if you're working with a teacher, and you have a bunch of resources, you can actually email them your board, so that then they have access to all of those links. Twitter, you know, Evan was talking about Twitter. The library actually has a Twitter account. And, you know, I'm using it more to communicate with teachers, but I do have students that are following. And I actually, there are other librarians in other places who I follow, they follow me. So, you know, it's kind of a mishmash of information. Today, I actually tweeted about the impact of a library book, and we'll go back to that in a minute. Delicious is sort of an older technology. Anybody here at Delicious before? Okay, so Delicious is a social bookmarking site. The library has this. This is really good for, Pinterest is very visual. So when you put something onto Pinterest, there has to be something visual that you can pin. Sometimes you're on a site where, or you have a document that's in PDF format, and you can't actually pin it. So what you do is instead, you put it into Delicious, so that way you can save it. And you can put it, you know, into different categories. You can actually search to see what other people have saved in their Delicious accounts. So it's just another tool that helps you to keep information organized in some way. Partnerships with educators to create lessons that help teachers and students spend less time searching and more time learning. I'm going to just quickly show you an example of one of the sites that I created. This was for a science class. It was actually for a chemistry class with Catherine Francis. And basically, what she wanted students to do was find five careers in the chemistry field, and research them. And, you know, they had to do job descriptions, skills and abilities, what the educational requirements were, what the salary potential outlook, all of that. So basically, so that the kids had spent less time going to Google and more time actually finding real information, I showed them, we have access in Salem Database, and Salem, and the Salem Database is Salem Science, careers in chemistry, careers in physics. So if they actually click on that, it brings them to different careers, and they can do a search if there's a specific career. If they click on any one of these, it will actually bring them to an article, and it will give them all of the information that they need. In addition to that, there were a bunch of websites, Career One Stop, Occupational Outlook Handbook, Own It Online. So, you know, again, the kids still have to do the searching. They still have to take that information and put it into their own words. They have to be able to, you know, filter out and figure out how to understand what they've just read. But it's helped them so that they don't have to look so much at the reliability factor. So, so just an example of some of the stuff that helps them to do what they need to do. Okay. Responsibility to resources. Anybody over here at EasyBib? Okay. People have had to do research in recent years, not in their head the rest. No. All right. So in the old days, when you wrote a research paper and you had to cite your sources, remember those of you who had to do it manually and, you know, figure out how to cite it, where it ends, all that other stuff? Yeah. Okay. So now you don't have to do that anymore. As long as you know a few things. And one of the things is that EasyBib exists as a website, and it also exists as an app on the telephone. So, you know, on a smartphone. So sometimes you'll come in the library, and you'll see tons of kids with their phones out, and they'll be scanning barcodes on the back of books, looking around like, what's that all about? It's that they're using the EasyBib app, and that means they don't have to write down what the source is that they just used, you know. You're saving paper, you, you know. And then if they have an account with EasyBib, which now that all the students have student Gmail accounts, it's linked to their account, they can access EasyBib in their mail, and then they can find all of their, all of their sources cited using this, using this. And these are just all of the different options and things that you can source. So you'll see paintings, pamphlets, federal reports, books, websites, digital files. So it's a pretty cool tool. You know, some people would argue, well, you know, they're not really learning how to do it. But, you know, it's a tool that everyone is using now. And the more important part of that piece of information is the fact that they're citing what they used, you know. That's the important part. Okay. Lastly, book talks and promotional displays, which is what everyone thinks that I'm doing all day. Like I said, it's a tiny part of my job. This is just a picture. Anybody see the movie Catching Fire recently? Just came out two weeks ago. Okay. So the book series was very popular. Now that most of our students have read the books in the Hunger Games series, I just put together a little display saying, hey, you know, Catching Fire is coming out. If you've read all those books, you may want to check out these, because they're like that. And I'm going to finish with this. Anybody here about this book, Your Police? No? All right. So just a couple of days ago, New York Times had a feature article, The New Police Commissioner of New York City. This book was actually his favorite book when he was growing up. And he grew up in the Boston area, so he borrowed it all the time from Boston Public Library, said that he doesn't even think anyone else ever would have the opportunity to borrow it, because he had it out all the time. So he eventually bought a copy, and he takes that, he has taken that book with him to every job that he has ever had. The author actually was an intern with Norman Rockwell. So it was kind of cool, the history of this book. But point being, you know, you never know what somebody is going to take with them all their life. And so my goal, you know, it may not be a book that the kids take, but hopefully, you know, they take the idea that the library is a welcoming spot, as librarians, as being people who are there to help you and not just shush you, and that, you know, there's a lot of information out there. So. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
The only thing I'll say is, these are two areas that are both critical to preparing students to deal with the real world. And neither of them are quote core courses, or, you know, they're not core subjects, but they're core capabilities that you need to have, research, where to go, how to get there, what you need, and then also what's going on in the world, how to understand what's going on in the world. Both those things are going to serve our students extremely well. So, very good.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, just for a second, just to thank Kim also. She does a lot of work K-12 with our other librarians, who are parent professionals in the library. And Kim's done such a tremendous job working with those folks, as well as our digital learning specialists with integrated technology, K to 12, and looking at research projects, K to 12 as well. So I do appreciate that. I appreciate John letting us work with Kim whenever we cancel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last presentation, back by popular demand, Mr. LaPret, or Mr. Rosa, is an annual appearance. But he's not here to speak to you about any guidance initiatives, although we do have new initiatives going on this year. But I told him I would give him a year off from that. But I did, as the co-chairman of the Accreditation Steering Committee, Mr. Rosa, Mr. LaPret, presented to you last December where we were in the self-study process. A year has gone by. We are now at a point where on the horizon is the actual site visit by an independent team of educators scheduled to be in North Reading, March 2nd through the 5th. So they have a presentation to bring you up to speed, I'll pass these out to you guys, to bring you up to speed on where we are in the self-study, what role the school committee will play in the self-study. And they've prepared homework for you. So as they begin their presentation, I'm going to give you a binder. They're going to walk you through what's in the binder.
This is available on Dropbox?
The homework, this time, we will go through a little more in-depth with you. But as you might recall, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges is going to be here on March 2 through 5, Sunday through Wednesday. And while the NEAS acronym has some kind of mean never enough accreditation stuff, at the high schools, we have done a lot with the time you've given us, and...
Very good. Okay. Did you hear? I thought he was flashing right there.
There we go. Okay. This slide just gives us an overview of the 10-year accreditation cycle. We entered sort of that self-study portion, for all intents and purposes, in about June or spring of 2012. We formed our steering committee, and we formed our seven standards committees. And then we were ready to, you know, run with it when we returned to school last school year in September. So you can see where we sort of are now. We're actually in really the latter parts of our self-study. And as we finish up, you know, with our reports, and there'll be more on that in a minute, and gathering our evidence and things like that, we're really now preparing for the, to host the actual accreditation committee.
So our self-study process has been one that's been characterized by many committee meetings, a lot of faculty, student, parent interaction, representation on the standards committees, you know, very comprehensive agendas for those activities. Inclusion of technology into the whole process, and I always feel like, you know, there's always an opportunity for us to do that, to streamline some things. And, you know, while you're getting some real hard copy here, there's, you know, all of this stuff is available on the high school Common Share. And I think primarily, the biggest piece of this has been the Schedule Professional Development Day. We had six in the 2012-13 school year. We've got six scheduled. One is for each month up until the visit, and they've just been, they've been, we could not be where we are right now. John and Mike and I went to a pre-evaluation conference. We had the first school in the spring season, and the word from the associate director was, we're in great shape. So couldn't thank you enough for those dates.
Here we see the, you know, the seven standards for accreditation. And we've just listed for you the dates that we, that the faculty and staff voted to adopt the reports as written. So you can see, we were sort of on a pattern. We adopted four reports by the end of the school year last year, which again, put us in really good shape for this year. We adopted the remaining three this year, including just about two weeks ago, the final report was adopted for the curriculum standards.
So future important dates, again, the half-day professional development day in January, one in February. Naturally, you know, the steering committee and the standards committees will continue to meet as needed after school to finish up some work. And I know that Mike and John and I will be busy in the final days of February break and prepping that type of thing. But I'm going to go back, and there's one date on here that it didn't put on there, and that's hopefully a date that we can arrange maybe through Kathy to kind of get some time to sit with you and go through this. Because you'll see on the next slide here, I'll let Mr. Rosa take it from here. He can give you the bad news.
Yeah. This is sort of the thumbnail sketch of the four days, really, of when the, you know, the visits here. The educators that make up the visiting committee will arrive at their hotel on Sunday, March 2nd. And they'll be here pretty quickly after that. They'll be at the high school a little before 1:00 that day. We'll have a panel presentation that's going to be made up of faculty, staff, and parents, they asked me on that. And we'll present on a variety of topics for about an hour, and leave some time for Q and A with the visiting committee. Then we go into a series of meetings and interviews. That first meeting is actually the accreditation committee asks the meeting with the school committee. So we have that laid out in a little more detail, which I'll show you. But that's really, what I'll, I guess I'll sum up is that, you know, the main obligation of the school committee will be a meeting that day on the first day that they're here. They actually come in, and they do start interviewing teachers right away. They want to speak with teachers, discuss student work as it relates to our core values and beliefs. So there's a lot of teacher interviews that happen that day. We conclude the day with a welcome reception right here at the high school. On Monday, March 3rd, they'll be here, you know, right when we start school, they'll probably be here from their hotel at about 7:15. There's two sort of concurrent building tours that go on. One is led by students, and that is for all the visitors to just get the layout of the school, understand it a little bit. And then our supervisor, building the grounds, will be giving them the, you know, the vacuum store, right? So they're in good hands. That's where they want to go see the boiler, and then all of those things.
All right, good stuff.
Yeah, all of it, right, the board stuff.
Vatting cages?
Yeah, the vatting cages.
Yes. Better see you soon.
Yeah, that's true. Well, we did ask, when we just went for our sort of pre-visit seminar at the NEAS offices in Burlington, we asked, can we show off the new school a little bit? And they really said, absolutely, yeah, if you guys could arrange a tour for that also. So building tours, more meetings and interviews, and the committee really starts their student shadowing that day, too, where they'll go to classes, they'll go to lunch with the students. They'll really get a good sense of, you know, our school community. Tuesday, more meetings, more interviews, more student shadowing. You know, they'll be here again from very early in the morning till in the evening. As they're sort of doing all of this, and gathering their evidence, and interviewing people, they really begin writing their reports, too, about what they're finding. And then Wednesday, they'll have their sort of final meetings. At about 2:15 that day, the chairperson of the visiting committee will make some closing remarks. So of course, we want to extend an invitation to anyone that would like to attend to that. And then they'll be, they'll depart.
Maybe, maybe sooner, in fact. There might be more around noon time, I'm not sure. Is it 2:15?
Yeah, they said, you know, 2:00, 2:30, but we figured, you know, somewhere around there.
Thank you. So more specifically than just to go back to that Sunday piece, in their draft schedule, and this schedule will be finalized probably by mid to late January, when we get our, when we find out who the team chair that's been assigned to the school and is going to chair the visiting team. But I think that 2:00, 2:15 to 3:00 time is a good place to set your bet. And when I... And when I was on a visiting team in South Shore Community, I was on the core values committee and met with the school committee from that town. And these were the questions that we were prompted to ask the committee, so I've got them in your...
Are you going to be able to write out those answers before we get...
Well, that's why I feel like, you know, I can't imagine they're changing things too much, but at least it's a heads up for you to kind of get a sense of what they're going to be asked and the direction that I think the visiting team is looking to seek your advice and your input and your role.
Because this is a Sunday, I'm assuming we get time and a half.
This is a Sunday.
Double time, oh, double time, okay. Sure. Kathy later.
At least it's after the NFL season.
We worked out the schedule. Yes, it just, yeah.
So we've tried to give you, you have your study guide, right, in front of you. Let me just quickly tell you what is in there. You know, you have what is a very important sort of document in all of the accreditation process, our statement of our core values and beliefs, the PowerPoint presentation that you have seen tonight. The school and community profile is a document that must be drafted as part of the accreditation, and it's kind of self-explanatory. It's certain information they're looking for about, you know, North Reading and the high school in particular. And that's a document that will be discussed a lot during that first panel presentation too. We've included all seven standards committee reports, which I think if you get a chance to look at them, you'll see how much sort of, you know, time and effort goes into those reports. They're pretty comprehensive. The evaluation visit, important dates and times, that's a, we have that slide that showed the sort of the dates and times of the evaluation visit. This is a little bit more comprehensive. When you're looking at that, you'll notice we outlined in yellow the, you know, the school committee meeting on that first day, Mrs. Willis' meeting on the second day, and, you know, some other events that might involve sort of the central office administration. And then lastly, we shared our, you know, again, our core values, beliefs in 21st century learning expectations and evaluation rubrics, which is a document that's been shared with all our standards the last, we discussed with them the last two years. So just to expand upon that first document there.
So what we're really hoping is, again, to work with Kathy, to find a time that works
with your schedule for about an hour, that you can sit with us and just, you know, ask as many questions as you want to ask, and we can provide as much information as we can about, you know, how certain documents came to light and what, you know, how they provide certain, you know, pieces of the curriculum and things like that. But I think it's going to be a lot easier than it might feel right now. Any questions?
When would you like to meet with the school committee? Does it need to take place in January, February?
I would say January is probably, you know, a good time, but at your convenience, whatever works for you the best collectively, I'll be available, and we'll make ourselves available.
Well, let's discuss that. I'd recommend maybe we try to do it prior to a school committee meeting, or do you think that makes sense?
Well, Mr. LaPret had recommended that.
I think that's certainly a time of your national meeting anyway, if you get that earlier.
We'll talk about that date. The only question I have is, how many times has the school committee completely blown it for the school? In other words, you've gone all the way through, and then they meet with the school committee and they say, well, we were going to credit this school, this kind of school.
I hope we're doing really well, because this can't help.
Just for us.
Three days to recover.
You're like the Patriots, you're going to have to make it up. You're going to be in a hole when it comes to halftime.
I know, we're first.
Long as we come out in the end.
Don't forget about us by the third day.
Thank you very much.
Great stuff. Nice job, a lot of work. Just curious though, why would they tour the current high school?
Well, that was a good question. It's an interesting question. We did, when we went to the seminar on the 21st, we asked the question, assuming that they would want to spend much more time in the new school, okay? I do, you know, we were told very pointedly a year ago that we were to evaluate ourselves in the self-study in this building. So when you read through the reports, the standard seven report, community resources for learning, is not very complimentary because it's reflective of where we are and what limitations they are in the current school. So we were, but we were told to that you must do that. So going forward, we believe, and again, we haven't been assigned our chair, committee chair yet, so we don't know what that person's wishes will be, but I think the associate director that ran the workshop indicated to us that he was very confident that the site visit committee would want to see the new school.
I would think just out of curiosity and interest.
It's logical. We believe that to be the case. I just can't look you in the eye and say to you, this is what the chair wants, because I don't know what the chair wants, because I don't know who the chair is.
It's interesting, this evaluation, which takes place every 10 years, has taken place within six months of us moving into the building.
As you read through the reports, you are going to see that much of what we found to be limitations of the work that we do is rooted in the deficiencies in the schools, and they're going to resolve themselves in, like you said, Jerry, six months, so, which is, you know, that's fantastic. So we're, and I think AJ said it, we're excited, we want to show off the new school. We want people to see it, so we're making that a priority. And they indicated to us that that would be the case.
Great.
I just, before I, and thank you both again, and I just, I think it's important for me to publicly acknowledge in front of the school committee and to the superintendent, the extensive amount of work that not only Mike and AJ have done in chairing the steering committee, but also the other members of their steering committee, all of whom are faculty members, and the work of the entire faculty and the parent volunteers and student volunteers that we have on certain standards committees. It has been, and we were told that it would be, the word was used, an exhaustive process, the self-study, and it has been. But it's been, we're not there yet, we're in the home stretch, so to speak, but I do think many if not all of us would agree that it has been a very good process. We, you know, we have been forced to look inward and reflect on the work that we do, and that's been good. I think we've really learned a lot about ourselves, and I think, I'm confident that the outside group of educators that comes in to evaluate North Reading High School is going to be very, very pleased with what they find. I don't see how that can't be the case. Will there be things we need to improve upon and do differently maybe? Of course, but I think by and large, a lot of good and hard work has gone into preparing for their visit, and I'm very, very thankful to everyone who's been involved. And thank you to you for the support, because without the professional development time that you granted us, of course, the superintendent has been hugely supportive throughout the self-study, it truly is a team effort. And we're excited. We're excited to receive the committee in March. I think we'll be glad when they're gone. We can get back to business as usual, but that's part of the process, and I think it's a pretty common feeling, so thank you, and thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, next, we'll keep John here.
Does this count towards my 30 minutes?
No, this is your...
This is outside, okay, so I'm good now? This is going to take about an hour.
We're moving. John is going to present us with his annual request for new courses at the high school.
Lesson five.
Yes. Go ahead.
Good, all right, thank you very much. So I believe the superintendent passed on to you some course descriptions of four new courses that I'm looking to present to you tonight for your adoption, to include in the program of studies for 2014-15. Just to go through those, and then I'll answer certainly any questions that you have, starting with the first one, because it's probably the one that I'm most excited about, given the fact that it's a course that we can only run in a new school. And as you know, the new high school is going to have, for next year, high school only, will be using the new television studio. And as we progress into the 15-16 school year, that's a space that I'm fully prepared and looking forward to sharing with the middle school to build a strong and solid video production program. So because the school will be opening next year for the high school, we're prepared to introduce a course in video production as an elective course for students. The second course is a course in sculpture. We've kind of come around this by, it's kind of like, you know, it's addition by subtraction almost a little bit. Again, going through, you know, what I think is probably going, it's going to be the first of some growing pains, moving into a new school, but the ceramics studio will not be ready for 2014-15 school year, because where it's going to be placed is actually part of what's going to be renovated as the existing middle school now. So because of that, we've looked at alternative art courses to run for those students who typically would enroll in the ceramics course, so we're kind of putting that off for next year, and instead are going to be offering a non, I'm going to label sculpture as a non-clay, non-kiln needed art course. So it's for those students who have the desire to extend their art study into three-dimensional art forms, but not through ceramics. The third course is an Algebra I honors course. We currently offer Algebra I as an academic level course only, but with, as the district moves toward its full adoption of the Common Core state standards, in this case particularly in the way of mathematics, where next year most, nearly all ninth graders will be taking Algebra I, we believe, and I say we because I've met with Dr. Daley, you know, extensively about this, as well as Mrs. O'Connell from the middle school, to talk about what that transition would look like. And we believe that we do have, you know, those students that are going to have the need for an Algebra I at the honors level course. So I'm looking for your blessing to introduce that for September. The last course is an advanced placement level course. It's a new course being offered by the college board, Advanced Placement Physics C. What we currently offer and have offered, well, as long as I've been here, has been the Physics B, but the college board is eliminating the Physics B as an advanced placement level course for September, and they gave schools two options to replace it with an advanced placement level physics course. The first is an algebra-based physics level course. We did not believe that that was the appropriate one for us to introduce here at our school, so we've instead opted for the more rigorous Advanced Placement Physics C, which is actually two courses run over two, it's two courses run in one year, a semester each. So it's actually, it looks a little funny in the title here, I know, with all the hands, but there's actually an Advanced Placement Physics C mechanics course, and then there's also an Advanced Placement Physics C electricity and magnetism. We will be introducing both, with each one being taught over the course of a semester for a one-year combined Advanced Placement Level Physics course. So it's technically not an additional course, it's a replacement of a course that's being eliminated. The students who participate in that course will take, it'll be the only course of its kind, they will take two advanced placement exams in the spring.
Great.
And that is all.
Questions or comments?
This is great.
John, what percentage of, over the, say, the last five years of the new course selections that you've come into the school committee with are still currently being offered?
A very high percentage. I can't give you an exact number, but I would say certainly most.
So the interest continues in those courses?
If we're, yes, I think if we're, more often than not, if we're not running a course, it's usually because of class size, that we just don't have the teacher to support it, because we still need to run the core courses. And so I may not be able to run an elective course, because in doing so, the core course class sizes might grow too high. And we're actually kind of at that point right now, to be very honest with you, which is why I'm really not in a position this year to be coming in with what typically has been a larger number of courses to be introduced, so. But I think it's very fair to say that most courses that we've introduced, and there have been 41 by the way, new courses since 2004, and they're cited extensively throughout the self-study reports, you'll read that that is something we've really championed, is something that has, I think, really put our students in a position of performing very well beyond just the course that they're in. I think it's prepared them for meeting the challenges in other classes and other standardized test offerings.
I'm hoping at some point you'll bring back Mandarin Chinese to us.
Well, the Mandarin will be back in the book, because you adopted that last year. So we're going to go forward.
You're going to try to go forward that again, oh, great.
In my budget proposal, my first round of budget requests to the superintendent and the director of operations, finance and operations includes a point two position again, but we have to go through the process that we go through annually, but that is still active and hopeful.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
Move to approve the four course offerings presented by Mr. Bernard.
Motion by Ms. Nancy, a second by Mr. Rowan, say for the discussion. Are you none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any others?
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Have a nice Christmas.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get back to continued business, and let's have a report on the building project from Superintendent Willis.
Moving ahead.
Everything is moving ahead, correct?
Yes. The last meeting was held on December 30, beginning at 5:30. Lots has been taking place regarding construction, and I'm just going to give you a litany of what has been occurring over the last couple of weeks since I reported to you last. Drywall has begun on level two and will then move to level one. Curtain wall work is ongoing and up to level one from level zero. Windows are installed in building A. The high roof on Main Street is being installed, and the building is weather tight. Administrative offices are framed, and the masons are done now. When I wrote this, they were almost done. The boilers are in and set. The chillers are expected to arrive in January or February. Ceiling work has begun in the auditorium. Kitchen equipment will be installed in February. Painting in building A will begin in January. Lights will be installed in building A and then in corridors. And in January, we'll have a good sense of what classrooms will look like in building A. Segment work continues at the back of the middle school. Michael and I can attest to that. The excavation for the tanks has taken place. That very large drill has moved to the front of the building A. And the parking lot will have another binder laid down for the winter. The wastewater treatment plant building is up, and the roof is being placed in over the next three to four months. The wastewater treatment plant equipment will be up and running for a clean water test. So there's lots going on with construction. All you have to do is look at that building from one day to the next. In terms of design, our architects have been involved with meeting of the DQW director regarding operation and management of the wastewater treatment system. The architect and the OPM attended the last athletic subcommittee meeting to answer some final questions, and they, I think that all of the questions have been answered up to this point. They also, Gilbane and Doran Whittier met with the stage rigging contractor to discuss line sets and counterweights in the auditorium. As far as I know, as of today, there's no new information regarding the settlement agreement with the Butters. The secondary school building committee reviewed and approved invoices. There was a motion at this meeting at 6:10 p.m. to go into executive session, and the next regular meeting of the SSBC is scheduled for next Tuesday, December 17th, beginning at 6:30 p.m. in this very room.
Questions or comments? Anything to add with it? Jerry, Janine?
Fire curtain survived.
Oh, the fire curtain, that's right.
Curtain wall is now framed all the way to the roof.
Right. No glass yet, but it's...
No glass, yeah, it's a bit kind of stormy.
That's the, so everybody knows, that's the curtain wall of glass in front of the distance learning center, lab, classroom. Anything else? Questions? Let's move it along. Great, thanks Kathy.
Thank you.
Next, we have to review and approve the capital improvement projects that were presented to us by Dr. Daley and Michael Conley last meeting. I believe, Michael, you want to...
Sure, there's a memo in your packet that talks about really the four projects that are focused on at the last school committee meeting that we would like to move forward and, you know, for the capital improvement planning committee for fiscal year 2015. The administration has recommended a priority order of these four projects that we discussed at the last meeting. These requests again are due to the capital improvement planning committee by December 16th, and we have included a draft, this is really in draft format, the capital request forms that we are required to submit to the capital improvement planning committee, and certainly appreciate, you know, Patrick Daley and Wayne Hattaker, who are here this evening, who helped me complete these forms. And, you know, so we feel strongly that the computer replacement project, you know, should be a top priority, given the condition of the computers, especially at the elementary schools that we discussed in the last meeting. We then felt a good energy management system, which should be the next priority, given that, you know, it's relatively, you know, a small investment, and it certainly will lead to savings down the road in that utility and energy cost, so. And then the phone system upgrade, we discussed, you know, the cost of $40,000 to really bring a comparable phone system that is going to be installed in the high school, middle school over the next couple of years. And then the utility and replacement would be the four on the list. So we're open to discussion, and we ask your approval for us to move forward and submit one of these forms to the capital improvement planning committee.
As long as the administration's comfortable, they participated in terms of ranking these. I mean, we already went over these, and I think recommend that these are the four we should go forward with, right? So, anybody have any questions?
I do. Just wanted to make a clarification on the phone system that you were just talking about. It says the maintenance cost will increase from eight to 13. Is that for the entire district, or is that just for the elementary?
Good question. That is just for the elementary. So there's about a, the total increase is actually... So there's about a the total increase is actually is this is actually 8,000 for the entire district in terms of our annual costs. And it's actually 5,000 at the high school, middle school level, and an additional 3,000 at the elementary at the elementary level. So we're we're for our local long-distance phone coverage, we're paying about, you know, on average about a little over 13,000 now. The estimates that are coming in on our annual maintenance costs, if we're to receive an entire replacement, I'd use about 21,000. So so the phone costs, eight, elementary additionals, three, high school, middle school is five, is 5,000.
Any questions? Jerry?
I was going to move to approve.
Okay.
Move to approve submitted to the capital planning committee, the computer replacement, the hood energy management system, the phone system upgrade, the utility van replacement totaling $170,000.
Motion by Mrs. Nancy, a second by Mr. Rowan. Any further discussion? Any none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Thanks, Michael. Next, we have discussion related to increases for fiscal year 15 related to the new building that will be coming online, and also maintain the high school, which the junior high school students will be attending.
Who's the last part?
Maintaining also maintaining the all utilities at the high school, which gives us which actually gives us a lot more space than we're heating and lighting right now because the high school is a lot bigger than the middle school. So we're going to have essentially two high school facilities that we're heating and lighting.
Plus the middle school you're going to be using. I would imagine some utilities in there as well while they're working.
Yeah.
There's a laser pointer there, too.
Yeah, I see that. That's great.
So we asked Dr. Daly and Mr. Howard to join us at the table because they've been instrumental in working with our director of finance and operations to put this together.
Okay.
Thank you. So basically, in your package tonight is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, as well as a summary of what we're looking at, particularly in fiscal year 15. And there's really two main areas that we're going to see an increase in operational costs to open the new building next year in there. That's this facility and building-related costs. You know, from a utility standpoint, there's going to be an increased square footage, particularly next year, when we need to keep this current building running, and this building will become the, you know, the middle school for a year. And we're going to be, you know, operating about 70% of that new building. So we're going to see a flip in square footage area, so because of that, it's really the driver behind some increased utility costs. And there's building maintenance costs, and we're all well aware of the wastewater treatment plants, and to keep that, you know, plant operating, you know, it's going to increase of our costs. And then there's technology-related costs as well in terms of licensing and device management contracts in place. So these are the two main areas that we're going to talk about tonight that are going to increase our costs. So we're first going to focus on the facility-related costs, and this first slide kind of goes through the four main bulleted items that we're going to see an increase, you know, cost in operations. The next slide after this, we'll get to the numbers in a moment. But certainly, you know, increase in gas and electricity costs due to the larger square footage. So, you know, essentially, you know, next year, we're going to be, you know, seeing almost an increase of about 100,000 in square footage area to operate this building, as well as the so 70% of the of the new building. So because of that, you know, we're going to see that, you know, that flip in the increase in in gas and electricity. There's also going to be, you know, we'll get to it in a moment, but there is going to be sort of a shift in gas to electric electric costs. And that's, you know, predominantly because of the new technology, the new heating and cooling equipment of the new building, there's going to be that shift to electricity costs to really run the new equipment and operate, you know, the heat pumps and chillers and so forth. So that that's really behind what's going to happen with utilities. The wastewater treatment plant, we're going to need to contract with a licensed operator to maintain the wastewater plant. So we have, we're certainly working with the town to put together these specs, to put that out to bid, and and to contract with a licensed operator. But to do that, it's going to come with a pretty, you know, a pretty substantial cost to to operate that that plant. The elevator service and maintenance costs, we're going to see four additional elevators that are going to require a service contract, so we're going to see sort of an increase just to run those four additional elevators. Down the road, it says fiscal 16 here, we're looking at an increase in custodial cleaning personnel. We do think that's going to be needed. We're going to hope to kind of get by for another year, another year, given with our current staffing level, but when that building goes fully operational at the high school and middle school, because of the increased square footage area and, you know, need to really maintain that new building, well, we do think there should there will be a need for an additional custodian.
So Mike, you and Wayne, you're not going to ask for that for FY15, then, huh?
That's not that's not in the budget request at this moment. We certainly discussed that, and we discussed it, Mike.
Yeah. Operating this school as a middle school and 70% of the new facility as a high school, but it may not be 100% done. I want to shake it up before we put down.
Okay.
Request to add another.
So that new that new person wouldn't be useful in the transition moving in and all that? Okay.
Here are the numbers. So this breaks down the new facility-related costs. We kind of did, we looked at 15 as well as 16, because that's kind of where the changing, you know, pieces are in terms of our facility costs. So this kind of looks at, this is sort of where we, sorry about that. This is sort of where we are now, that first column there, in terms of fiscal 14, in terms of what our gas and electricity budget is, we're at about 323,000, you know, total budget, and that's to operate both the high school and the current middle school. The projections, now, these are, we certainly worked with a consultant, and we received, you know, projections on what our utility expenses are going to be, so we certainly, Wayne and I have reviewed these, and you can see that shift. You know, our gas budget is going to go down, and electricity budget is going to spike. And that's, you know, really a result, you know, this these equipment that's going to be installed on these on these roofs are going to be pretty much powered by electricity. And it's going, you know, so you're going to see sort of a shift, you know, that dynamic going to be, you know, at play.
So we're going to use less gas to heat the places.
FY15 shows this school fully operational.
Right.
And that school, 70% of them, fully up, but it shift up there. Historically, we'd use gas, electricity here, and up there, it's going to do this, hopefully. And eventually, it'll hopefully be more aligned. The whole the whole technology up there is to shift electricity, tube electricity and away from gas. Now, it's amazing, looking at the model that we've had had given to a special Manta Wall company. Very small amount of natural gas and a large amount of electricity, because if you look to those gigantic rooftop units up there, but there are all energy conservation measures built into those, one of those which is called an entropy wheel. I did see one of those in operation. It's it's an energy-saving device, but there are there are those units up on the roof, and there are all these other other measures to save electricity. But the whole technology, our way of thinking is electricity and gas and the whole, it's going to shift. I mean, it's take a little to get our mind around that.
So you're literally going to reduce your gas consumption to about 25% of what it is currently.
A lot, a lot, a lot. Right now, up there, there are three, four million BTU condensing boilers, it's probably 96% efficient, that will be operational. And then compared to what this this two old steam boilers down here, we're hoping that the gas consumption is going to drop like dramatically.
Right. So so what you're seeing in FY15, the focus on 15 first is that is that increase, particularly in for the most part, because we have to continue to operate this building. So utility is going to go up, you know, net total $75,000 next year. The wastewater treatment plant, the estimated costs that we've received and gone through, and these have been looked at time and time again, and gone over, is at about $100,000 right now. And we are in the midst of of working, you know, closely with the town on putting together, you know, a bid to go out and and contract and, you know, and conversations on, you know, how how that contract's going to be managed, and the oversight and so forth. So that is in the works, but that is a $100,000 amount that we have to plan and budget for. The elevator maintenance, you know, this building, I don't think really has any. We have four elevators coming on board. We have to, you know, it has those annually inspected and so forth, and maintain a service agreement. So to do that, it's going to cost about $15,772. So we have to certainly plan and budget for that increase. You see in fiscal 15, we're not anticipating that custodian, which we're hoping to put that off, as we just talked about, into the into 16 and two years out. So we're looking at, you know, the total impact of fiscal 14 for, you know, for these facility-related costs is at 190,000. Then when you look, you continue down this chart, you look at fiscal 16, you can see that we're actually going to save in utilities. So when that building is fully operational, you know, this building comes offline, again, because of the that that design, that the green energy and the lead points that we're getting, you know, digital MSBA reimbursement points on, when it's fully operational, there's going to be that shift again from gas to electricity, but we're going to actually, even though we're increasing square footage area, and the square footage area is still going to be higher than what we're at right now, because it's a more, you know, much better design and efficiency, we're going to actually see a decline. So there is kind of light at the end of the at the end of the tunnel, which is which is great news. We'll continue to have to operate the wastewater treatment plant at about $100,000. Continue to have to maintain the, you know, the elevators, get those annually inspected, maintain a service agreement, so those costs will remain the same. And then here, you see the addition of a 1.0 FTE custodian at about $45,000, you know, estimate that would begin in fiscal year 16.
Just to make it clear to the public, and I believe this is correct, but we had to put a wastewater treatment plant with this.
Right.
Because of the size of this project.
Right.
So we don't have an option. We can't just put a septic system in, and we need to hire a licensed company to run the plant for us, correct?
Correct, we do. We're trying to do that, and that's kind of that's what what we've spoken to, most, you know, that most people wrote and hired that and contracted that out as opposed to what we do that type of thing.
Right.
So this actually, next slide, attempts to show you the correlation between the utility cost numbers that we just kind of were discussing and the square footage area. So we're attempting to show the last, you know, several fiscal years, this charts it out, beginning in fiscal year 11, we're very flat, our utility budget and so forth, and the actual numbers have been remained relatively constant. And then, as well as our square footage has been constant, but then you see what's going to go happen in fiscal 15. You're not only going to have a have a, you know, a flip in square footage area that we're going to have to address, you're going to see the utility budget is going to go up as a result. Then if you look at fiscal 16, you can see our square footage area is going to go down slightly, not not as much as our as our costs are going to go down. So the red is charting that square footage area, it's going to be a slight decline, but then you see that significant decline in our utility budget, which is actually going to, which is actually dropping lower.
That's great.
Than where we're at currently.
So we told the public this was going to be more efficient. We were actually correct.
Yes. We're actually correct.
Wow. We're just kind of making that up, too. That's great.
And again, I mean, we're hoping, we're hoping it's a very conservative, it's a very conservative estimate.
Yeah.
What we reviewed, Wayne and I have to hold this time and time again, and we think it's conservative. We're hoping if once we have data, it could be better.
The thing I'm going to be interested in seeing is, given the the numbers of windows on those classrooms, you could have many days, who knows how often we're going to need the lights, depending, you know, depending on, but there's so much natural light coming into the building. So this could be conservative, and that that would be great.
We'll hope. So now we're going to move on to the technology-related costs, and I appreciate, you know, Patrick Daly's been extremely helpful, and he's gone over these numbers time and time again. So technology is a little bit more complicated, because you have certain things that were required to put up, you know, into service with the new building that are going to be kind of coming in at different times. So you have, with the initial acquisition as part of that FAFD budget, there are certain things that, you know, we get free for three years, or two years, or four years. So you have certain types of different costs and expenses that are going to be kicking in at different times throughout, you know, in that three to five years. But these essentially, these six bullets are essentially, you know, a summary of what our technology-related costs and and operational increases are going to need to be. Device management contract is going to be our, you know, requirement to to have increased costs, we're going to have certainly an increase in the number of devices. The technology budget is going to allow us to bring a significant number of devices, you know, into the building, but because of that, we need to certainly have a device management contract and to manage additional devices, those costs are going to go up. Maintenance and repair costs, certainly to adequately repair and repurpose the existing equipment, there's going to be a need to invest some additional, you know, operating dollars to maintain that equipment and so forth, so those costs are going to go up. We're going to have those new devices, and as part of having those new devices, we're going to have additional software costs to install new apps for those devices. So so that is additional expense. We've discussed phones, the voice-over IP phone system. To do that, it's going to come with a maintenance contract to manage a new hosted phone system, you know, but again, based on the benefit that we're going to be getting, you know, from that phone system, it's certainly well worth it. Media cast, you can see this is the first item that has fiscal year 16, so this is two years out. This is the streaming video technology that we will experience in the classroom, I'm sure, as John can say, I'm sure teachers are very, very excited about. That's going to kick in in year two, so that's a cost that you have to plan for. And then this is the wireless network maintenance piece. This is an additional piece that's going to kick in. We actually get three years of free free service out of this every week, so this is kicking in kind of down the road. So 15, 16, 17, over the next three fiscal years, we'll have to kind of worry about this cost, but then there is a cost in that in that fourth year that we have to plan for. So these are the numbers behind what I just talked about, gave kind of a five-year outlook here. The device management, it's going to be a little bit higher in year one, as you can see, that 17,500 number, and I believe, you know, part of this because we actually kind of, that's kind of system-wide, and we're trying to do that.
With that, speakers, we're switching from a per-device model to a systemic purchase with then yearly costs. So right now, we're paying, we we really research this well, we go with AirWatch, which is the most cost-efficient. We're paying $9 per device, so we're currently paying $2,700 a year. This would allow a one-time purchase, but then go to 2,500 a year. Not only all the devices that we're adding, but this would also allow for BYOD, that kind of situation, so we could work on every device. We want to do that when the new building comes online, so that's why we're asking for that year.
That's excellent. So we have a so that's higher than that first year, then it begins to go down. There are repairs and services that I just talked about, which may also have been costing about $9,000 per year. The software and the apps is about, you know, $1,000 the first year, and then, again, as more devices come online, you know, more, you know, software and apps, we continue to learn, think that cost will go up to about 2,000 in year two and continue at that amount. The phone system, I just mentioned it earlier, it's about $5,000 additional cost annually. This the ability to video stream in the classroom, that cost is going to start in year two, and that's a $5,800 expense. And then the wireless network piece to, you know, appropriately manage our wireless infrastructure, again, we have the three years where we can get by, you know, no additional annual maintenance costs, but that amount is going to kick in in that fourth year, fiscal 18, at 12,340. So we're looking at a total cost in terms of technology-related costs of 32,500 additional in that first year, then going down, staying at about 24,300, and then it's going to go back up when that wireless network piece kicks in. So this chart attempts to just kind of chart out that changing, you know, what we're looking at in terms of our new technology costs. So we have an initial bump of 32,500, which driving that mostly that device management contract to handle the new devices. Then when it kind of goes down, is that because that cost drops in year two and three, and the wireless network piece picks up and starts in that year four, fiscal 18, and the costs are going to go up to about 36,640 annually. This last chart just summarizes the last two, and I tried to itemize this in a separate supplemental handout, so you have you have that in what we're looking at here. But again, facility-related costs, you know, back to the earlier slide, 190,772, what's really driving that is the wastewater treatment plant and the utilities cost for next year. That's going to drop, you know, it's going to drop because of the utility savings, it's going to go down to 1,42, but we'll try to kick in a custodian that year, too. And then you can see the technology at 32,5 in fiscal 15. So what we're looking at next year is about a 223,272, you know, operational cost increase.
I think when you're broken bringing a 120 million dollar project online, these are more than reasonable.
I'm relieved.
I am, too.
If you blow away the cost of the wastewater.
Right.
If you blow away the cost of the wastewater point, it becomes very, very reasonable.
And, and I think, you know, I'm not going to say that the guys missed anything, but we're, we're not going to know everything until we start operating these schools. But given that you worked with a consultant, you worked with Wayne on the facilities, you worked with Patrick on the technology, and we pretty much know what the wastewater treatment plant is going to cost, I'm pretty comfortable with these. You know, I think the issue is, where are we going to find them in the budget?
Well, this is going to become part of our level services budget, really, if you think about it.
Right, moving forward.
Right.
And, and, you know, personally, and everyone else in the committee can chime in here, I know we're not going to be able to find all of this in our existing budget next year, but I would like...
Or should we have to? It's part of our level services budget moving forward.
No, but what I'm saying is, I would like to, I mean, we got some pretty optimistic numbers from the town at the last finance planning committee meeting.
Which I think you need to share this immediately with them.
Well, we, we have a meeting Friday.
Yeah, I think it's a good time to write up, start it right now.
Yeah.
So they know.
And, you know, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, let's try to do as much as we can without asking for a whole lot more money. In other words, they're already, they're already looking at, they're already looking at a four and a half percent increase is what they're looking at in terms of revenues for us for the next fiscal year, right? That would, four point two or four point five percent?
Four point, four point two percent.
Four point two percent. So let's see how much we can work with that, and if we need more, we, we ask for more.
Okay. But I mean, I just don't want to see us going in and starting out with taking a shot of two hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in our budget for FY fifteen, you know, without at least going to the financial planning team and saying, look, these are costs that, really, essentially, again, they're level services costs.
Right. They'll be part of, yeah, part of our budget forever.
Right.
We didn't have enough money this year to support Mandarin.
Right.
I keep going back to that because we pledged to support, financially support, as well as supporting the, the course last year. And, you know, we didn't have that much money in our budget. That was a, that was small money.
But I know what the chairman's saying though, too. The financial planning teams were very supportive over the last several fiscal years in the budget process, and this year, we're not looking at the same problems and deficits we've looked at in the last couple of years, so.
Right. But I think this is great.
Yeah. Excellent work. Good job.
Again, I would like to commend the gentlemen that have joined us tonight for this presentation. They started working on this last year, so an extensive amount of time has been spent in trying to really tease out from the consultants, what will the increased operational costs be for fiscal year fifteen. So I'd like to thank Michael, Dr. Daly, and Wayne Hardaker for all of their hard work. As you can see, they provided a very clear overview of what they believe will be the increase to cost, and I'm, I'm relieved, as you had mentioned. I think they've done a great job, and I think we're ready to move forward now with our budget planning process.
Well, that's a question that's often been asked, and I think Bob Masary in particular is always on top of these things, so he was asking this question, you know, a year and a half ago, so I think this is, this is excellent.
Well, I'm pleased, I know, I know the committee has, we've talked about this earlier on, I'm glad we have it this early in the process. I've seen other school projects where they haven't had it, and they have these last-minute surprises, and it can be a nightmare, where you don't, you don't have enough teachers to fill up all the classrooms at the new school because we didn't realize how much money we needed.
Mr. Chairman, the fact that we're foregoing that extra custodian for that first year, I think you need to throw that into the discussion too when you're talking about.
Yeah. Great. Anybody else?
I'm just incredibly impressed, this technology budget is so minimal, and prices are great.
I agree.
I mean, I, I'm doing my budget process now, I'm really impressed.
Really good.
And it's very comprehensive.
Yeah.
And I like the way that it's phased in, so amazing stuff.
I think the phone system going with the, the internet, the voice-over IP phone system is the way to go. There's just no need to have equipment onsite anymore. You can actually do it in the cloud.
Thank you. If I could just clarify too, the one thousand dollars in FY fifteen reflects the high school only with the new devices for the apps, but the five thousand reflects both schools with the VoIP, because part of what VoIP is, when we do our transition from the middle school to the high school, you just pick those schools and plug them in.
Right.
We can start using those.
Yeah, they can use them here, yeah.
And all the advantages are certainly, we wouldn't save much by doing two, so it probably costs more to run the old system here, trying to figure out the number, so it's a, that's, that's, that's why that is five thousand a year.
Good stuff. Any else? Great job, guys. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight minutes.
Next, we have minutes. I've looked over both of these. We have the executive session from November twenty-fifth, and we have the regular meeting from November twenty-fifth. I did not find any errors unless anybody else found errors. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve executive session, November twenty-fifth.
Motion by Cliff, second by Janine, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One extension. And then we have the regular meeting for November twenty-fifth.
Move to approve the regulars meeting, minutes of November twenty-fifth.
Motion by Cliff, second by Karen, further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any others? Thank you. Okay, next, budget update. We don't, do not have one. Staffing?
Not at this time.
Business donations?
No.
Subcommittee updates? Just have a quick update.
Very briefly, the, the focus of our subcommittee, athletic subcommittee meetings has been, and will continue to be for a while longer, the new school project. So we've had discussions at our last couple of meetings that were, we were joined by Jeff Whitten from PMA, our project manager, and also from Rob Juice, who's from Doran Woody, our architect. And we've been trying to just outline and make sure that we understand fully what we are getting in the area of athletic facilities. So the, the practice fields, softball field, the gymnasium, we've asked them to price out a few things. We were looking at electricity going out to the fields, that's been taken care of. Expanding the volleyball capacity at the, in the gymnasium, that's been taken care of. We're looking at what we can expect as far as possibly contributions from other organizations within the community. In particular, we're looking at the scoreboard at the little school softball field and what it's going to take to move that over to the new facility. Looking at potential of at least extending the irrigation capacity from the street up to the new practice field and softball field without necessarily putting the irrigation in, but having the capacity. We also discussed the concussion helmets that the athletic boosters have been great in purchasing. I think there was ten, ten new helmets purchased this year, was it?
I believe so.
We have, we're in that thirty-something area.
We're thirty-something.
About thirty-four, right?
Thirty-four. And, and as I think John and Dave Johnson and pointed out, the, the helmets that we, all the helmets we have are concussion certified, but we're, we're working towards replacing all of them with, with new helmets. The other thing I'd say is that, based on my walkthrough of the school on Friday, it's exciting because the gymnasium is actually starting to take shape. You can go in there now and you can see the areas that are designated for the auxiliary gym and for the workout area. It's, it's really starting to take shape, the locker rooms, the bathroom facilities. So it's, I think it's going to be very impressive when it's completed.
So one other thing I mentioned, I don't think you mentioned, we have, we had, they're putting concrete pads in for the bleachers at the softball field, and I think that's also something that we may be looking to work with community groups, once we get across what those bleachers will be.